Good evening. It is Tuesday, September 6th, 2022, 6:00 AM. And this is Urbana City, our City of Urbana Committee of the Hall. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti? Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry? Mayor Marlin? And that's it.
All right. Can we move on to approval of minutes of the previous meeting? Oh, we have no meeting. Oh, sorry. We have no me-meeting, okay? Any additions to the agenda tonight? Okay. Our next thing is that we will have a closed session regarding collective bargaining pursuant to 5 I L C S 120 slash 2 C 2 and personnel issues pursuant to 5 I L S I L C S 120 slash 2 uh, C 1. Can I get a motion for, to move into closed session?
I move that we go into closed session.
Second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Chandra Bishop. And so we shall move into closed session.
We got a vote.
Oh, sorry, we got a vote. Been awhile since I've been here. Uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Okay, we're back. And I'd like to hear a motion to come out of closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh... Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, next item up on our agenda, staff report. For the draft con- excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry, presentations in pub- sorry, Sheila. Presentations in public input. Is there anyone that would like to address the, um, city council tonight?
Uh, is there a timer? Should I just go?
You need to move, move forward to Al, Al.
Alright.
So we can, yeah.
Yep, I'm just waiting for the timer there so that it's fair, you know?
There you go.
There you go.
Thanks. All right. Good evening, everybody. My name's Alan Maxax Rod. I live in Urbana, Ward 3. Three months ago, I spoke to the city council about the homelessness situation of my former neighbor and her family. They are still homeless. They went to the Cunningham Township and were told that the waitlist for the family shelter was between three and four months. We will be following up. It's not unusual, really, for folks to be homeless for more than three months. That's the reality for quite a lot of people here. If we were able to house people within three months, we would meet the federal criteria for ending homelessness. For unaccompanied youth, for chronically disabled folks, for veterans. It's 45 days for families. That's the federal standard. We don't meet a single one of those. I've talked to you before in my capacity as a Champaign-Urbana Democratic Socialists of America co-chair about the match-the-mill campaign's demands to expand the support force workfor- uh, support for workforce training programs enrollment and to increase the stipends of all those enrolled. Let me tell you about the oldest daughter in this family. I first met her and had like a serious conversation with her when she was 15, took her to races. During this latest bout of homelessness, she's had multiple jobs, trying desperately to get pay stubs high enough to get her lease application approved. She recently applied to Town and Country and was just shy of the dollar amount threshold that they qualify for whether or not someone gets rental housing. She had gotten that lease, her entire family would not have been homeless anymore. She has had difficulty holding on to any of those jobs because she and her family are homeless. One place that she worked was Plastipack. At that particular location, there's one bus route that serves that location. You work a full shift, you are either going to miss that bus on your shift on the way out, or you're not going to get that bus when your shift starts. They have a day cycle and a night cycle, and that's a very limited bus route. It's not enough. She's had to get rides. I've driven her there a lot. Her former manager drove her a lot too, and sexually harassed her and numerous other workers. She stood up, he got fired. All while she is homeless. She had a health issue last week, or the week before. Ultimately, losing her job. Before that job loss, but during the health issue, I took her to the emergency room. She's always wanted to be a nurse, you see. While she was being treated, she was asking the nurse who was treating her about nursing. How is it, how easy is it to stick, to get a vein? How do you practice? She's 19 years old. She is the perfect candidate for the Support for Workforce Training Program. But because the stipend for that program is not a housing wage, she can't get housed. She can't get enough hours to work to get housing. That's even less tenable if that program doesn't have a high enough stipend. So please understand that this is not anything cynical. It's real. If the stipend from Parkland were a housing wage, which by the way, for those of you who have been looking at the housing wage numbers, they're based off the median rent prices and it's been increasing. You need to earn about $18 an hour now in Urbana in order to get it, in order to not be rent burdened for a median two-bedroom apartment. Craft doesn't pay that much. What are they going to do? Have a good night.
Is there anyone else that would like to approach the, um, city council? Anyone else with, you know, public input? Okay, seeing none. Oh, okay.
Good evening, everyone.
I'm gonna adjust the microphone.
It always happens.
Just bend it down.
Thank you so much. Okay, good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Pastor Angel Johnson. I come to ask, um, a question about Limmerman and Washington. On the corner, there was, um, a lot of people that I used to speak with, and they loved to go to that little garden there on the corner. And they always, um, had just delights, like they were so happy they could go get green vegetables and I would like to know what happened to the corner of Limmerman and Washington and what happened to, um, the funding that the, uh, city council had, um, given them to have that there once upon a time, and, um, it's not there anymore. And, uh, it's in the neighborhood. I don't live too far from it. And it just makes the corner looks really, really hopeless and terrible and raggy and ran down and look like we lives in, um, places that you shouldn't really wanna live in. And I was shocked to see that corner looked that way due to the, um, the county building is right across the street from it, and it looks amazing. You know, the county building and the place where they play soccer and all the good stuff. I was really, I was like, wait a minute, why is this looking like that? That was happening to poor people. But right across the street, where we have our Champaign County Board, uh, meetings and all the Champaign, big old officials and all the money, while that looks nice, and over here on the side where the underprivileged people live, is tore down. It's just gone. It's, it's, um, it's really horrible, you know, and it fits in with a horrible liquor store on the corner there. There's a liquor store. They didn't tear that down and they didn't stop funding for the liquor store to keep continually operating, or they just always, you know, make sure that the liquor store people get their license and get, you know, things that they need. But here's something that took her, our, um, our poor neighbors, um, underprivileged neighbors, um, they was able to eat, at least they was able to have something nice and look forward to. And I seen many of them, I was stopping, talking to and say, hey, so, so you a gardener? You like doing it? They're like, yeah, this is fun. It was so, now they're telling me like, I went back and I spoke with some of them, they're like, they always take stuff from us. You know, they don't like black people. I said, well, I don't know. But I told this one young lady, I said, I asked her, I said, would you go with me to the city council? Maybe you need to address this. She said, oh, no, I'm not going up in there. They don't like us. I said, what you mean? And she didn't understand the process of coming to her city council, so I'm gonna start something where people could get understanding why it's important to come and address issues. I'd been turned down, I told her for uh, Angel Houston, and I've been doing this for years, and I won't stop because I love youth. If she loved gardening, I wish she could've came with me tonight, but what is it? What stopped her? Rejection. See, I won't get never stopped by rejection because I served Jesus Christ who been rejected all his life. See, he was a reject, and so his spirit in me, so I could handle it, like I shared with the young lady. I could handle it. Cause I'm used to rejection. Let's take care of our people. This is my community. I live in it. I live on Rutledge in Urbana. Everyone knows that. Okay? We wanna help them keep their neighborhoods up, kept too, and let's see what we can do about getting the garden started again. Because several people told me they used to help with their garden, but they don't have funding no more. So what happened to the funding? And why was the funding taken away again? Okay? And so, um, I'd like to also ask the question if that someone can be appointed to help me to make sure when we do our grant proposal again for the ARPA money that's coming out, can they help us, okay? So we could have a better understanding, so that we can do it correctly. And just give us some pointers, like one, two, three, you know, what, what you need, what you're looking for. Then it'll be up to me and our team to do it right or don't get it right. But not getting it right, have, we have failed because we're not doing things right evidently, so we like for the city council to help us with that, okay? God bless. Take care.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more people that would like to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, moving on. Um, we have a staff report, uh, the drafted Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, CAPR. Community Development. Hello, Ms. Sheila Dodd.
Before we get started, I'll just point out that this was a goal of council to, um, see the CAPR. So, um, we do bring it every year, but I tried to be a little more, uh, uh, descriptive on what it is and where it comes from and how we get the data and the information, so. The Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report provides, um, performance reporting on clients, on outputs and outcomes, and it ties back to our goals and our consolidated plan as well as our annual action plan. Who uses the CAPR? HUD uses the CAPR and the IDIS data to obtain essential information on grant activities, project sponsors, housing sites, leveraging of funding, beneficiaries, that type of thing. IDIS is the, um, uh, web-based system that we do all of our reporting to HUD in. So when you guys approve the annual action plan, it goes into IDIS. And each time we set up an activity and we draw funds and we pay somebody, all of that data gets entered into the, um, IDIS system. So where the CAPR gets its data is, once you, like I just said, you approve it, it's uploaded into, um, IDIS. HUD will send us grant agreements and we can start spending the fund. Um, throughout the year, as people apply for different projects or as, like you guys approve, uh, social service funding, those activities get set up into the system. And then as we draw down the funding, we report the, um, beneficiaries and their income level, race, demographic information in that system. And at the end of the program year, um, we generate the CAPR from that, so we'll, we'll just push a button and say 21 CAPR is what we, we are working on. We use the report to provide annual information on program accomplishments and meeting those performance outcome measures that we set in our consolidated plan. And then HUD incorporates that data into their annual report to Congress. And I will say that not only HUD Region 5, which is Chicago, has access to our IDIS data, but they do have it in DC and they do access it periodically. You know, Durbin's office might call in with questions if there's a big gap in something that we're doing. So they do pay attention to it to see what we're doing. Um, the CAPR is due 90 days after the end of the program year, so it's September 30th. Typically, we try to get it done earlier because you never know what can happen. So this year, our funding for Community Development Block Grant was $524,000. Home was $819,000. We had a balance of COVID funding, and I can share this with you after the meeting too, so you guys have the slides if you'd like. Um, we had a balance of $183,000 in, um, COVID block grant money. Um, if you remember, we got about $670,000 in that in the prior year. And then Emergency Solutions Grant, um, their regular funding as well as their COVID funding. We, um, have an agreement with the state of Illinois that we are the pass-through agency and we've, um, are supporting Cunningham Township and we did the, the men's shelter for a period of time too. So the balance of that for this year was $167,000 that we started with. So some of our challenges this year kind of led over from the prior year. Um, our, our rehab projects were delayed until the fall of 2021. Um, we were only going to people's homes where it was an absolute emergency, uh, to go in. If it was a project that could be waited, we waited because we wanted to keep our residents safe. We designed new programs to address housing and small business needs, and those were, were successful. The community service, social service funding grants were delayed, and I think we talked about that when we came in January. And so because they were delayed, they didn't start July 1 like they typically do, um, they're gonna run 18 months. So we don't have, we have about six months of data, but, but the programs are really just now getting started. So we'll have a full report on that in December of, um, '23. We had First Followers Become a Chodo, uh, which is a community housing development organization. Um, we've worked really hard with them and they've been great partners. They are rehabbing, um, homes for rental units in partnership with the Housing Authority. And then they're using those rehab projects as training opportunities for youth that are involved, um, in the Youth Build Program at the Housing Authority. So it's, it's going along really well. Um, we also gave money to First Followers, uh, to do a, um, COVID-related program. So people were being released from prison early because of the pandemic, and, um, they applied for funding to help those, that group of people get, um, on their feet, find housing, you know, uh, get set up to start out, you know, fresh out of prison. And then Champaign County Healthcare Consumers received funding to help those that are the medically fragile. They, they were released from the hospital, but they really couldn't go into a group home or into a homeless shelter. They had to be sep- separated out. And so we gave them funding to help with that group. And then the Emergency Solutions Grant funding, um, was a real challenge and not because of our agencies, but the, the state of Illinois had put up some barriers that made it difficult for the programs to get kick-started. But now that they have overcome those and they've changed the rules, um, Township is really spinning down the funding. And I think, uh, Brayden told me this week that they have, um, spent all of their COVID funding. So it's, it's getting out into the community like we all had hoped it would, so. But there were, there were some challenges getting that going. So some of our accomplishments in '21, '22, we did 12 home repair programs, assisted 27 businesses, provided rent and mortgage assistance to 33 families. Habitat for Humanity added four affordable housing units that they sold to low-income families. Um, First Followers added two rental units. And then we assisted 33 families with tenant-based rental assistance. And it seems like, um, Alan has a little bit more updated information than me, but in the spring, 47% of renters are considered rent burden in this community. To afford rent on a two-bedroom home in Champaign, um, they must make $16 an hour at 40 hours a week, and it sounds like that number's changed a little bit. We do have three transitional housing units and they were occupied, um, two of them for the entire year, one of them for partial, part of the year. And we're in the middle of rehabbing it and we'll get it back online shortly. And then we, uh, still have a great need for tenant-based rental assistance program. So this past year, we brought to you a couple of different programs. One to assist victims of gun violence who needed to be rehoused quickly. Um, Courage Connection wanted, uh, needed funding. Their program had run out for victims of domestic violence. And then the, uh, Champaign County Regional Plan Commission's normal TBRE program for those, for folks going through No Limits. Some of the other challenges was there was no low-barrier year-round homeless shelter. Another need that's been identified is, uh, some neighborhoods have lack of adequate lighting, drainage, or walkability. It's not safe. And then we've, um, had the community as well as council identify youth programming as, as a priority. Some of our new programs this year, um, we did a homeowner repair program in conjunction with the Champaign County Regional Plan Commission. Um, we've partnered with Ameren to do an energy efficiency program that has been really slow to get off the ground. Uh, but the way that it will work is Ameren will income-qualify folks. But if there is, um, if there's a stipend that they require the low-income person to pay, the ci- and they're City of Urbana residents, we will pay for that on their behalf. Um, or if they're getting a new furnace, at that point, Ameren did not consider air conditioning, uh, priority, then we will pay for the air conditioning on the home just because it fits into our other programs. It's really difficult to put in a new furnace and not upgrade your air conditioning unit at the same time. Um, we also provided down payment assistance and then the youth services grants, which you're familiar with. So we have posted the, um, plan online. It went on August 24th. I've sent a link to all of you, so if you have any questions, uh, it's probably, hopefully 95% done. We've made some, you know, minor tune-ups and changes over the weekend with just typos and that kind of thing, but there's no substantial changes, um, and I don't anticipate making any at this time. So, does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Uh, Grace?
Thanks for the presentation. Um, could you just help remind, clarify us, this is the report for just the City of Urbana, correct?
Correct. Well-
Even though the funds are from countywide also?
Yeah, it, it is a report for the City of Urbana's CDBG, but if there were home projects, those would also be reported. We did not have any home projects in Urbana or Champaign this past year. And it really is staff capacity and there, and we haven't had a developer come forward for the funding. Uh, but we have been all given so much money. We're trying, and with a deadline of getting it out the door, that we've been focused on getting that out the door.
And so like with the funding on one of the earlier slides, is that just Urbana's allocation or is that countywide funding?
The Community Development Block Grant is just Urbana, and the home is the county. It's the consortia.
Thank you. Um, and with the TBRA, um, we talked about this in another one. I get some of the different things confused when we see you, which thing we're talking about. Um, but we left off a conversation about having additional allocations for TBRA from another pool of money. Could you remind us what that was?
We will issue, um, an RFP, Request for Proposals, probably October-ish, um, for TBRA funding. We'll just make it an open application to any agency that wants to apply, uh, that, that funding is available. And we're, we're kind of waiting to do it in partnership with the City of Champaign because they are putting together, um, administrative funding that will go with that TBRA cost. So kind of like we did with the gun violence where we provided the administrative costs out of our CDBG allocation. Champaign is, um, funding the, uh, administrative costs out of their CDBG allocation for any applications that we get.
So the request for proposals would be from a company that would manage, like distribute the rental assistance or what, what would RFP be?
Yeah, it would be a request for proposal for agencies wanting to implement a tenant-based rental assistance program.
So kind of like we already do with Township or something?
Well, yeah, Township could apply. It, currently, we, we've never done one with Township, but we've, we've done them with, uh, Courage Connection, and we've done it with, um, mental health, and we've done it with, uh, county. But, you know, agencies can apply, yes.
And the Down Payment Assistance Program, is that a new one or is that the one we've talked about that was a kind of reimbursement on a down payment through the lender? Or is this a different thing?
Yeah, that's, this is different.
What are we talking about here?
Yeah, that, yeah, that one was bond cap. No, this one was designed, um, with the lenders to provide, it could provide down payment, it could provide closing cost. Um, it, there were a variety of things that it could provide based on the CDBG guidelines. Um, unfortunately, we got two applications. One of them wasn't in the city limits of Urbana. They had to be buying in Urbana to qualify. The second one did qualify and we were able to help that family. Um, but unfortunately, most of the lenders with interest rates as low as they were, they just, they weren't seeking out other funding, um, to help the families. So that one didn't move forward as, as much as we would have liked it to.
Thank you, and I may find more as I go through a second time, uh, in the next week.
Sure.
Um, but I was wondering too, in another conversation, we brought up kind of big picture of looking at the housing, um, situation and needs still, and I appreciate your slides on identifying some remaining needs and gaps in the housing. Um, and I think that'd be particularly helpful as we're going into ARPA decisions on, you know, what's available countywide and in the city and how to best kind of utilize the most immediate needs and those long-term goals. So I don't know, I think that would probably be a bunch of, you know, input, but especially from your department and some of the other activists and, you know, real, um, strong organizations in the housing community.
Right, right. Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Carolyn and I've kind of met on this privately last week, and it's amazing the amount of, uh, programs and money that's available and how much they intersect. And so trying to get the best and strongest applications and maximize our funding is, um, it's gonna be creative.
Thank you.
Chandra?
Um, so going back to the down payment program, that was under new programs for this year? Okay, so that is still available or, uh, and is it only lenders are offering it? Like a person who is looking to buy a house can't pursue those funds themselves? It has to go through a lender?
Yeah, we worked with local lenders, um, as part of their CRA credits. Um, there's a loop, a group of local lenders that we meet with each month, the Committee Reinvestment Group, and they helped us with the design of where they were seeing people falling through the, the gaps and where they needed assistance. And so we kind of designed their ideas that would fit the guidelines of the CDBG funds. Um, but, and like I said, unfortunately, there just wasn't a big take on it. So we may continue it through this next year if we can, if we get- So, we may continue it through this next year if we can, if we get requests. But, you know, if we don't get any through this '22, '23, we will probably not offer it again. Because why reserve the money when we're not able to use it? And there are so many other needs.
So, so is there a list of lenders that people can look at and request that lender ask about this program? Or, okay, okay. And then the home repair program, is that the one that was like with roofs for seniors? Or something like that?
The programs that we have right now are an emergency assistance program. Roofs may fit in there. The problem we're finding with the roofs is their cost to replace them is, well, the last one we got an estimate on was $15,000, and our program limit is eight. And so if the family can't come up with the $7,000 difference, then we have to walk away. And so that's one of the programs that I think we talked about during the council goal-setting of doing an ARP application for to maybe help fund that gap. It tends to be seniors that just don't have the capacity to do it. And so I hate to see them lose their insurance or their home because they can't afford the roof. But we do, we've done furnace repairs, sewer repairs, those type of things that if not fixed, the person couldn't live there. We got a water line repair going right now. And we also do accessibility repairs. So if someone needs a ramp, or they need their bathroom retrofitted so that they can continue to stay in the home, but just need minor modifications, we do those as well.
And so is it any eligibility restrictions? Like, could a, like a small landlord or whatever apply for this? Or just only homeowners?
Their owner occupied, and they're income-based.
Okay.
It's offered anywhere in Urbana, but it is income-based.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else have questions for Sheila? Of course, Grace!
Just one last thing. Shandra asked a lot of good questions, got me thinking too. I was going to ask about where the public could find information on the down payment assistance. I found it pretty easily on the city's website with a Google search. Is that right, the Down Payment Assistance Program page?
Yeah, it's there. And then we market it through the local lenders, but since they're the ones that helped us design the program. So as buyers come to them, that's another resource that they can have to use to help, to help them into homes.
And was this advertised any more than that?
No.
Because I think that might be a piece, because, I mean, I don't know how many people that are struggling that wouldn't want assistance on their down payment if they knew it was an option.
Right.
So I think that some awareness might also be a piece of this.
Right. We always do a balance of, the marketing is expensive, and we try to get the money into programs versus advertising. Plus, that advertising cost comes out of our administrative cap. And so that makes it difficult to run the programs too. So it's always a balancing act. So we try to get it out through the lenders, realtors. We went to the CCAR and marketed it there. I think, again, like I said, one of the challenges this year was really that interest rates were so low. The lenders didn't feel like there was a demand. And maybe this year with interest rates going up a little bit, that they'll see that there is a demand, and maybe they'll apply for it. And we market it at our meetings every month to the lenders, that remind them that this program is available.
Anyone else? Okey-dokey. Thank you, Sheila.
You are welcome.
Now we're moving on to new business. So, coming to the committee is Resolution Number 2022-09-065R, Resolution of Support for an Application for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Funds, Baker Lane Multi-Use Path, and this is Public Works, and we have John Zeeman. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. So, going to talk about this first resolution, and really three resolutions, kind of in series here, all about...
Pull it closer to your...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Is that better?
Yeah, you got that low Barry White voice there.
I hope the camera's not on me, I'll make you blush. So, we have three resolutions I'm going to talk about here in series, all asking for your support for grant applications that we are working with the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission on. And so, first one is for Baker's Lane Multi-Use Path. We're looking to apply for an ITEP grant. As you may be familiar with the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, is a program that's been around for a while. This is, I believe, the 15th application series. And so, a very common use for the ITEP grants is a pedestrian or bicycle path, which is what we're going to look for with these two. The Baker's Lane Multi-Use Path, as it's, in your council packet info, included a map to illustrate where it's proposed to go, starting, essentially connecting Washington Street and Main Street. If you were to draw a line kind of north of the Smith and Washington intersection. We have, the city's had this like 16-foot-wide piece of property for some time now. And this is actually our second application for this, this project. We, the city had applied back in 2020, didn't receive it, but we had gotten some good feedback from the state. This is a grant administered by the state, I should say. And working with RPC, we feel, you know, that we've got a stronger application this time around. Partially, we've got some more progress with the Kickapoo Rail Trail Extension up north of Main Street there, that, you know, is related to this project. Also, the Park District's Health and Wellness Facility will be directly connected up with this path as well, with the schools, the neighborhoods, Weaver Parks. I think, we think it makes a stronger application than it did before. But so, yeah, it'll be an eight-foot-wide multi-use path. You see, the Park District got involved because it's not a straight line. Of course, if it was just me, it would be a straight line. But people who know better than me know it should be a little wavy, and it makes it more enjoyable. And then we get down south to, as we're going south from Main Street, there'll be connections into Elm Street and Illinois Street, into the Scottswood subdivision there, connecting up the neighborhood, and definitely getting some practical connectivity for the residents there. And then going on down to Washington, and basically replacing the sidewalk that's on the north side of the street with an eight-foot-wide path for, for really that multipurpose use. And so, we're working closely with the Park District, and we're working with the School District just for, you know, understandings about property and maintenance and all that. Yeah, looking like about a $1.3 million project. And these ITEP grants, the federal share would be around 80%, and the city would be up for a 20% match. It should be something like, you know, and these numbers are already a little, a little higher than the current estimate, but like I'd given you in the memo, around $280,000, which is something that we can definitely work, plan for in our state MFT funds, probably what we would use for that local match. And so these, these applications for the ITEP grants are due September 30th. And so we're presenting to you a resolution stating the city's support for this application. And I guess I'll take any questions, if there are any, for this one.
Are there any questions for, okay, Mary Alice.
Hi, so it actually kind of goes along with the second one that you haven't presented yet. But you had alluded to the fact that the city already owns, as you say, 16 feet, basically to go along this path. So this $1.4 million would be the cost of laying pavement over that amount? Or is there other costs that are needed?
Good question, yeah. And so that, that $1.4 million, $1.3 million, $1.4 million, that would include the construction cost and the engineering costs for the project. We don't anticipate there being any right-of-way costs, because all the land is either owned by the city, the Park District, or the School District. And we're working, you know, in coordination with those agencies to come to agreements, you know, make that happen.
And I, we had a presentation a little while ago about some options for extension of the Kickapoo Trail. And I know that's not what this is, but it does reference the Kickapoo Trail. So, do you know where we stand right now with that, and how this would intersect with that area?
Yeah, I do. The, at least as it relates to this, this path, the preferred option, is my understanding, is to basically acquire property from Main Street over to the Kickapoo Rail Trail, and to have a connection. Basically, if you look at the map there, there'd be like a crossing across Main Street onto this property, and there'd be a connection to the KRT that way. That's the preferred route if property acquisition can be done.
But this route would end actually, what, on the south side of Main Street? Or would it go across to the north side of Main Street?
This one would end at the south side of Main Street.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Grace.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. For this one, is there already an existing sidewalk or path? It looks like there's little paths. Is it paved or not currently?
There is, what there is existing right now is, there's sidewalk along the north side of Washington Street there, in front of the schools, from like Kinch to Smith. And then on the south side of Main Street, there's an existing multi-use trail that we'll connect into. But then basically, really like along Baker's Lane, there's kind of a goat path there already, but not any paved areas.
Thank you. And then my questions for this one, and I, for all of them, so whenever you think is the most appropriate time to answer them, is if there's a cost to apply for this? And if, what if we're not awarded? And then what kind of planning or public input has gone into it? Or would plan to go into these in the future?
Yeah, good questions. Well, I'll admit that I don't know quite how the sausage is made here with RPC. I know that we, so RPC is doing a lot of the work, along with my input as well. And I don't know exactly like how we pay into that, like if this is just a part of our regular payment into RPC, or if there's some special fee assessed.
Because I would be curious if, if there are any upfront costs to, just to consider and know about.
Not that I'm aware of, unless there's some costs associated with working with RPC. Yeah, and I apologize. What is your second question?
Yeah, no problem. And if someone could check notes, like Carol was maybe making some notes. Thanks, Carol. Other question was, what if we're not awarded, then would these projects just not continue? Or is there like a set plan going forward? We come up with some new creative solution? Or is there like a, we would proceed anyway? Just kind of if there's a sense of what if we weren't awarded?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. And the, the Baker's Lane, I'm not sure. I mean, I think the, you know, the more the Kickapoo Rail Trail continues, this is going to become more, you know, something we need to complete eventually. But, you know, currently, it's not in the CIP, you know, without the ITEP grant. So as it stands right now, we don't have it in the CIP for the Baker's Lane. You know, for Florida Avenue, as you know, we're going for a home run with the RACE grant, which we didn't get. But I think we'll be hearing more from, about the Florida Avenue corridor study later this month, and how, you know, we still intend to make improvements along that corridor, and this path is an important part of that. So I think, I think that we try to find some way to make it happen if we don't get the ITEP grant.
Thank you.
Shandra.
So is the ITEP grant one, one big grant, and you're cutting it into three projects? Or is it three different ITEP grants?
Good question, yeah. There are a number of ITEP grants awarded to different municipalities and agencies across the state. In fact, each grant, so we're applying for separate grants, essentially. And each one is a maximum of $3 million, so they're not large projects in that sense.
Anyone else? Can I entertain a motion?
I will make a motion that we place Resolution Number 2022-09-065R, Resolution of Support of an Application for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Funds, Baker's Lane Multi-Use Path to City Council on the Consent Agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. Mary Alice moved for the resolution, and Shandra seconded it? Well, can we, can I, is there any discussion? I'm sorry. Yeah, Grace.
Thank you. I was wondering if we could put it on the regular agenda, since there was a few pieces of information still coming back about if there was upfront costs to apply, or any other questions that may come up?
I don't think that there's upfront costs to apply, like a grant application fee?
Yes, that's what we were going to confirm. I think that has not been fully confirmed yet.
Oh, there is not a grant application fee?
No grant application.
I can, I can confirm that. I apologize.
Okay, yes, that was, that was my question.
I apologize. I misunderstood.
Okay, then I think I'm good. Never mind then.
Okay.
Any more discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, moving on. Next, John, you here for this one too?
This is me. So this will be...
Resolution Number 2022-09-066R, Resolution for Support of an Application for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Funds, Florida Avenue Multi-Use Path, Lincoln to Race, and this is John again.
Okay, thank you. And so, this is an ITEP grant as well, for the Florida Avenue path on the south side of Florida from Lincoln to Race, you know, following up on us not being awarded the RACE grant for the larger project of road improvements and so forth. We're going to pivot and apply for this ITEP grant, which would include, yeah, the 10-foot-wide path along the side of the road, along with new streetlights on the south side of the road, and new tree plantings along this stretch as well. The, you know, the great thing about this is we have, the University of Illinois is very supportive of this project. So it's something we definitely want to move along with. This is all on the university's property, which will, you know, enter into a, you know, maintenance and easement agreement with the university for this project. And, you know, it's, what would be great about putting the path in there, it's, you know, been identified in the multiple master plans the city's been a part of. This is a missing connection in our bike and pedestrian network. So it'd be a, you know, a real, real great asset there. So we have a current estimate of about $1.1 million for the whole project. And again, going on with the 20% match, the city would provide would be approximately $267,000. And since we had been planning for this larger project than the CIP, we already have, you know, state MFT funds kind of lined up for this. We'll use a small amount of that, as, could use a small amount of that as our local match. And I don't know, I know we've talked a lot about Florida Avenue project. This is kind of a larger scope, and I don't know if there's any questions about this side path in particular that I could answer.
Yeah, James.
So I just want to confirm, thanks for the presentation on this, and this is a much-needed path. But I want to confirm what I thought I heard earlier was that we're applying for this in case we don't get the larger project.
Oh, I apologize. We, we were notified in August that we did not receive the RACE grant for the Florida Avenue project. We didn't, we didn't quite make a, make a big announcement about it, but we, yeah, it was, it was a bummer.
Okay, so, so what, so we're going to wait for another opportunity for that? And go ahead with the smaller project, or?
Yes, that is, that is one approach. I know we, we met with RPC just last week to look at the, wrapping up the Florida Avenue corridor study. And we're going to come back and talk to you guys, I think, on the 19th, to talk about, you know, finalizing that corridor study, what are the next steps? I think you'll find that we're going to have some, you know, broken-up action items, like the side path, like some other improvements, and be like, well, here's some funding opportunities maybe we can use to take it in pieces, or apply for a big RACE grant again. Yeah, we have some options ahead of us.
Okay, and that would include, you know, the sections like the intersection at Race and Florida, and the intersection of Race and Vine, I mean, Florida and Vine? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for John? Grace?
Thanks, thanks again for the presentations. On this one, I think this is the one that particularly, the question is relevant for me on some of the planning and public input process in the past and future for this Florida Avenue one in particular. Just out of concerns of locking ourselves into something prematurely, that if we do a 10-foot multi-use path, and then we say, well, we want to redo the streets and actually do bike lanes on each side in a separate sidewalk, just out of the concern of locking us into something kind of prematurely. And there's a lot of people in this community that are very passionate about pedestrian and bike paths and things. And I wouldn't want us to commit into this plan and budget and then get more feedback from, you know, we haven't even seen the Florida Avenue corridor study and heard from the public on this yet. So I guess my question is a little bit of that insight and how flexible or locked into a plan are we in this application?
Sure. Well, okay, so to answer your last question, the details in the grant are not, it's not really strong details. Essentially, we're locking ourselves into the budget. And some basic details like the, you know, if we say we're doing a 10-foot wide path, we ought to do a 10-foot wide path. But we don't provide them, you know, detailed plans of what it's going to look like. And so if we, the risk is if we under-budget for something, you know, the project costs more than what we budgeted, the federal government's only going to pay the part that we had asked for in the grant. But no, far as details, it doesn't get too, too much into that. Concerns about locking us into something that may change. The, you know, and we'll, we'll see how the discussion goes with the Florida Avenue corridor study. I'd say that it, it has not seemed to me that the bike lanes on the street in this segment have been, something has been called for by substantial, by public input. At least it was, you know, obtained by RPC. The really nice thing about the side path is this is an arterial street. And with the higher volumes of traffic, you know, it would always be my preference to keep bikes a safer distance from, you know, the vehicles. And we have, we have an opportunity to do that with, you know, easier opportunity than we do in a lot of corridors where we have to have right-of-way acquisition and there's challenges like that. But, you know, just kind of, that's just stating my opinion on that part. And I can say I haven't seen strong opposition to the side path in the public input that I've seen.
If I could just add a note and maybe you could expand on this. My understanding is that this multi-use path connects to a network of multi-use paths in the immediate area.
Yeah.
So it would be carrying on what, what the rest of the immediate network is already composed of.
Correct, yeah. It would directly connect to like the multi-use path along Race Street and south, going south of Florida. And then going west of Lincoln, you have a multi-use path on the south side and on Lincoln going south of Florida as well. And I don't know how far back it goes, but I know in the current pedestrian master plan, bicycle master plan, this, this is the treatment for bike accommodations in this segment is the side path.
Great, thank you. Yeah, appreciate sharing some of that background on what's informed the decision for choosing this design over something else. So it is in there. So we are set to somewhat of the, we're set for the budget and some of the loose design, but you're saying there's maybe some detail wiggle room. But it's not like the next one, the Safe Streets for All that, you know, has like five years for plan, design, construction. This one seems like it's a little more locked in the application as far as the general idea of what we're doing with the 10-foot path and multi-use path and all.
In the sense that by comparison to the Safe Streets for All grant, there's going to be, for that one, the intention, there'd be a lot more. We would be doing the public input period as part of that project, whereas, you know, we would be essentially using the public input garnered from the Florida Avenue corridor study to jump into this one and get it going.
So you're saying that's already been incorporated in this 10-foot wide path proposal?
That is-
The Florida Avenue corridor study information has already been considered in this decision?
I, I think I, yes, if I'm understanding correctly, yes.
Okay, yeah, my question was that if that information gathered from that Florida Avenue corridor study has already been taken in, evaluated and considered in the decision for this 10-foot path?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, go ahead, James.
I was going to go ahead and make a motion, if that's okay.
I would certainly entertain that.
I'd move resolution number 2022-09-066R. Resolution of support for application for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Funds, Florida Avenue Multi-Use Path, Lincoln to Race. To council for approval on the consent agenda.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Can we also, discussion? James?
Yeah, I'm going to support this. I, I've been watching the Florida Avenue corridor study pretty closely. And I believe I've seen kind of sample plans for what might happen there already that, that included this. I think the important thing is, you know, the extension, my neighborhood is bordered by this. And I know our neighborhood uses Race Street and the multi-use path on Race Street. And it would be really great to be able to continue that usage towards campus. One of the things I will, I will say is, this is something that while we have interest and support from the university to move forward on this, I think we should try to move forward on this because it goes past the president's house. And the current president has, has embraced, I understand that the current president has embraced this, this idea of a multi-use path running through the front yard of the president's house. The next president might not want that. Not saying our president's going anywhere, but, you know, I, I think we got to move while that opportunity is there. It's a good enhancement. I do share some concerns that I think Grace has raised with regard to what happens with the overall Florida Avenue project. I think this fits into the design that's going to, we're going to see a lot more of hopefully when the corridor study comes here. But it needs to be done in such a way that if there's some adjustments to the, the road study, that needs to be done there, that this can be flexible or adjusted. We do it in such a way that we don't have to change things significantly if need, if need be.
Anyone else? Discussion? Okay, can, can I get a vote then? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Alright, moving on. Thank you, John. Next we have resolution number 2022-09067R. Resolution of support for an application for Safe Streets for All Grant Programs Fund, Program Funds, Champaign County Education Encouragement and Enforcement Campaign and Lincoln Avenue Project, Washer to Killarney. And that's you again, John? Alright.
Yes ma'am. Okay, thank you. And so I want to start by just kind of laying out the Safe Streets for All grant. My understanding is it's a new program, new federal program. That, the way we're approaching this is the, the Champaign County region is applying for this grant as a, as a unit. And so with RPC leading the charge, there's going to be, you know, county-wide, you know, Education Encouragement Enforcement Campaign. Urbana has a project, Champaign has a project, the County Highway Department has a project. And, you know, I'm probably missing something in there too, but it's a fairly large application, which is due September 15th, so it's coming up really soon. And my understanding is that it's not a, it's not an all or nothing application, that pieces and parts can be awarded without having to award the whole, everything to the county. A really nice thing that can be going in our favor is that in general, the communities get classified as either rural or urban. And we are on the upper like limit of what is considered a rural community. It's very likely that we will have, you know, we may, we, we hope to have a strong showing among the rural applicants, you know, for this award. So where we come in is that we have, we have our project, the Lincoln Avenue from Washer to Killarney. And we are participating in the county-wide education program. That's the ask tonight is for your support for that. Where the RPC would develop and implement this comprehensive roadway safety campaign across the county with the members of, you know, the QATs, the Champaign-Urbana Urbanized Area Transportation Study, paying their share into this. And so that's where we come in as, you know, with the estimated cost of the campaign being $1.25 million. Then the city's share would be $50,000 over the course of five years. And so that's the, that's the request on that leg of it. And then for the Lincoln Avenue project, this is a project that you've heard about or speak about. It's in our CIP. It's a, the way we had originally planned for it, it's a couple of years out. And we were planning to do some resurfacing, some basic improvements to it. With this grant, it provides an opportunity for us to do, you know, take it a few steps farther and to really, really make it a better, safer corridor for all modes of transportation. And so we're looking at reducing the existing four-lane cross-section to a three-lane section, two through lanes and then a, you know, a two-way left turn lane in the middle. And by reducing, doing this road diet, reducing one of the lanes, still provide more space for bicycle and pedestrian accommodations in this corridor. And, you know, as Grace alluded to, we're looking at here the five-year time horizon for, once the grant is awarded, for us to do planning, design and construction. And what we are going, so we're framing the, the details of this project as, you know, generally we want to do a road diet, we want to make improvements to it, but we're going to consider some alternatives. And we lay out a couple of alternatives, either doing on-street bike lanes or using a, constructing a multi-use path on like the west side of the road. And so we'll consider those alternatives, you know, with public input and do some community engagement along the corridor, especially with some of the, you know, we've got some large apartment complexes along there. And this really a, a large source of the pedestrians and the cyclists that, you know, are currently not getting that the good accommodations on the street as it's built today. You know, addition to the residents kind of getting more towards the south end of the project and trying to, trying to improve ways of getting safe pedestrians, you know, crossing across the street, which we've got a couple of mid-block crossings planned with the signs and actuated pedestrian signals, but then, or pedestrian signs, I should say. But just by doing the road diet, we'll make it so as a pedestrian, we'll be able to have refuge islands in the middle. So you have to cross one lane of traffic, you have a refuge island, and then you cross another lane of traffic rather than having to go across four lanes of traffic all at once. So that'll be a, you know, just a big improvement by itself. We have support, you know, partnership with MTD on this. MTD's directly partnering with us on this grant for some of the like bus cutouts and bus shelters. We're planning to do similar kind of bus cutouts that we've done on Green Street to get the bus stops kind of out of traffic, which will especially help when we go down to, to, we have one lane in each direction. And one, you know, some of the main, the big safety concerns that led, you know, us to identify this project as the, you know, really good candidate for this program is, especially up at Kettering Park Drive where there's MTD bus stops. And, you know, if somebody's getting off the bus on northbound bus, they have to just walk across the street. There's, you know, they're pretty far from any signalized intersection at that location to get to the apartments on the west side of the street. So that, that's one example. And there've been a lot of rear-end collisions and things of that nature to where, you know, if we get some improved pavement and get the, you know, we can do some more streetlights or get some better street lighting is one thing we'll look at too. It's really just, the whole idea of the grant is, is to improve safety. And so that's the basis of this grant is analysis of crash data and pointing to the different engineering ways that we can reduce some of the crashes that have been happening in recent years. So for this project, current estimate is for $10 million for the project. And so if it was, if, this is again, going to be an 80%, 20% split between the federal and the local match. So the $10 million, the city's share would be at $2 million over the course of five years through planning, design and construction. Coincidentally, the current, you know, Lincoln Avenue project that's in the CIP does have a budget right around $2 million. Now that was for the whole project and it was a much smaller project than, or, I mean, it was a smaller scope than what we're talking about here. So coincidentally, we have the money planned for in the CIP, it's just for a different use. So we definitely could stretch, you know, get a lot more out of this if we're able to get some federal money to help us. So I would just point out, I think in the resolution, a couple of things that, you know, the, the city's Vision Zero policy, I listed that as, as a, you know, relevant to its part of the application. The, the Champaign County actually did adopt a Vision Zero policy as well. And as part of this grant application, it felt like it checked a number of boxes in the mayor and council's strategic goals that you guys passed earlier this year. Strategies, you know, were promoting community well-being and increased investments in infrastructure equity and recruiting new businesses and industries. Just because I, you know, know there was a discussion of, you know, recruiting a new grocery store kind of in this part of town. And it just can't hurt to have good infrastructure when you're trying to, trying to grow that. I think that is, yeah, I mean, that's pretty much it for me. What questions do you guys have?
Does anyone have questions? James?
Thank you again. And I'm going to be expecting to hear from Sharice about this because this, this is your area, right?
Yeah, we, and, and John and I actually had a very long discussion about it.
Okay. What I want to know is what happens at Washer Avenue with this proposal? Does it go back to four lanes at that point? And, and why, why there? Why, why not closer to University Avenue?
Well, for right now, we are looking at essentially like, yeah, doing a transition where the three-lane section would still be a washer and then we'd do a transition out to the Fairview intersection. And-
But, but why? Why not take this concept like all the way to University? What's, what's special about those four blocks that needs four lanes of traffic? You have more, well, there's pedestrians all along here. I've drive, I've driven up here, up and down here before. But it feels like the pedestrian density gets closer more as you get to University Avenue.
Actually, Mary Alice, would you take a chair for me?
Yeah.
Sure.
Please, go ahead.
Yep.
What, what, well, this, this, this is my understanding. Is that, and you can say the closer you get to University Avenue, actually, there's not a whole lot of pedestrian traffic between, I'd say Hill Street and the University Avenue going, going south on Lincoln Avenue. You have, we have, we have student housing, one north and one south going. And then there's Capstone. There are many houses on the east side of Lincoln Avenue going north. Those houses kind of come to a screeching halt once you get to Hill Street or Park Street because Carl takes up all of that. You also have the Bristol, wasn't that the Bristol?
Oh, the Retreat.
The Retreat. When I drive down Uni, uh, Lincoln Avenue, I don't see a lot of, of pedestrian walking from, I'd say, West Hill Street to, to University. from, I'd say, West Hill Street to, to University Avenue.
So maybe it should go to Hill Street then, is what you're saying?
I, I, I have gone to Hill Street.
No, no, I mean, this, this change to the road should come all the way down to Hill Street.
I think it would be best for it to stop at Fairview because from Fairview going north, you have King School traffic and you have children. Children that go to King School within walking distance live on Hill Street and there, there's Harvey and Gregory and those streets that they can cut to to get to Hill Street. There are some, some that may live on Lynnview and Bucy where you have to cross Lincoln Avenue. And that's why I would prefer that it stopped at Fairview, mainly because if we're going to have the three-lane traffic, because there's also been other traffic issues regarding bus pickups and stuff like that. But we have five years to try to figure that out as well if we get this money. Am I correct, John?
That's correct, yeah. I'm, generally with a federal grant, you don't change the, the logical terminology too much. So like going from Washer, you know, blocks south of that generally is not something you do with a federal grant. And I know my colleagues at RPC may have a better handle on if there was safety-related reasons that it was stopping at Washer. I don't know if there was like a, you know, it's really just the identifying like, well, this is really where the, the biggest safety impact is being made. I'm not entirely sure.
Good. I, I had two more questions if that's okay.
Okay, I just wanted to answer that.
Would you like the chair back?
I would like the chair back, thank you.
All right, I relinquish it back to Sharice.
And so there's two models shown in the packet. Are we, are you wanting to find out from us which, which one we lean towards? Or is that just two possibilities that we will figure out as time goes on?
That is the two alternatives to be considered during the planning phase of the project.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we don't need to, to weigh in on that at this point? And then my last question is, have we consulted with the fire department on the impact of this change for what they need to go from that station out to calls they go to?
We're definitely, you know, working in coordination with the, you know, the fire department and the, their design team, you know, for that new fire station, yeah, how, how this could impact their, their plans.
Okay, and I, but I'm thinking about how they use the road. I assume, I assume a middle turn lane is better for them, but I, I'd like to know that, that's, that is better for them.
I guess I don't know, and that's a good question. I can look into and find out.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Any other questions? Grace?
Thanks. On the street boundaries, I agree with also maybe some more information about why ending at Washer instead of Fairview then? Because that seems like an important one that sounds like would be harder to change once the grants, if the grant were already awarded, right? And we applied for it with this section, can't easily expand it. So I think that's an important one to have clarified before applying. And I would, I agree with also wanting some confirmation, just touching base with fire department and any other relevant entities in the world of traffic and road safety that might have some input on that. And I understand there's a general project here, but I think that would be helpful. And I didn't know if you could explain a little bit more about why the cost is so much higher on this project than the others. I'm imagining it's some of the planning and restructuring the whole road instead of a side path, but it seems like a lot. And also is that added? Is it 10 million for construction and 1.25 million for the campaign?
Yeah, those are separate, those are really separate things, yeah.
Okay, so 10 million is just the construction, whereas the others are one or one and a half million. So I didn't know if you could explain a little bit more about why this is 10 times more than the others?
Oh, than those side path projects?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. So the elements that come into that 10 million, $10 million is reconstruction of the road. And that's a major part of it. So like we had $2 million budgeted in the CIP for doing a resurfacing of this, this road, this same segment. We've also included in there, street lighting and new signals and... Those are kind of the, the big items, but yeah, it's, a lot of it's really just, I mean, you're comparing a, you know... Yes, we got essentially like a 40, 50-foot wide roadway that's getting rebuilt, plus the, the sidewalks and the side or, and/or side path along the side. Yeah. For a length, oh shoot, I'm going to kick myself. I wish I wrote that down. I don't recall what the length of the project is, but... Does that, does that kind of answer your question?
Uh, yes, I think so. I mean, I can imagine, but just any other clarification that you had was great. So yeah, I'm good, thank you.
And, and we'll follow up on the southern terminus of Washer, how that was determined and the fire department's input on the three lanes. So thank you for that.
Mary Alice?
Uh, just to expand a little bit on, on Grace's question. Are you proposing in this grant, is it proposing that we rebuild the street and not resurface it?
Correct.
Okay, so that's a huge cost differential between rebuilding it versus just resurfacing.
Yeah, and part of that came into that, you know, an important aspect. One really nice safety feature of urban roads is a, a curb that's at least six inches tall. And if we continue resurfacing, that we will have shorter curbs that then don't provide much barrier from a car, you know, going off the road. And so in order to really get back to where we have the full height curb short of, you know, reconstructing the pavement is the easiest way to get there essentially, because you've already built up your surface higher and you just have to kind of restart some of it. If that, if that makes sense?
Yeah, no, it, it makes sense. It's just in the, in the other two projects, we were talking about building a, a multi-use path. This one, which is about 1. whatever million. This one, we're talking about reconstructing an entire road going all the way down, which is, is a huge endeavor.
That it is, yeah.
Okay, all right. I'd be happy to make a motion if others...
I would be happy to entertain one if no one else has any other discussion.
All right, I, I'll make a motion. I won't put it on consent agenda because there are two pending questions. So I move that, we move Resolution Number 202209067R, Resolution of Support for an Application for Safer Streets for All Grant Program Funds, Champagne County Education Encouragement and Enforcement Champagne and Lincoln Avenue Project from Washer to Killarney to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, thank you, James. Discussion. Grace?
Hey, just had a quick one. Wanted to say thank you to the staff and Public Works and RPC for doing this. I think that, you know, I was impressed with these creative ways to let, leverage that grant funding and partnerships to do a lot more than we could on our own. So I really appreciate looking for outside ways to do more than what we could do with just our own funds. And I also really appreciate some of the quality across the city here that it's not just campus or downtown areas. We're looking at a few different parts of the community and some major connectivity gaps. So I just wanted to say that I appreciate that creativity and having a distribution throughout parts of the community. So thank you.
Anyone else? All right, can I get a vote? Everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, next, moving on. We have a resolution, Resolution Number 202209-068R, a resolution adopting the City of Urbana American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Concept Plan. And this is from executive and Will will be giving us, and who else is this?
We have Ashley and JD from the RPC with us today as well.
Okay, thank you.
So I will be really brief just to introduce it. And then there's something that I had in the memo that you want to come back to. We can come back to it, but I want to give, you know, it's been a long night. So I want to give RPC the most time. So what you have in front of everybody is the resolution to adopt the concept plan. And the concept plan is the transition from Phase Two of our ARPA process to Phase Three. So ending our, the first phase was gathering the public input, the background research. The second phase is developing the concept plan. And then once this is approved, we'll move over to the implementation. So the concept plan kind of represents the synthesis of past planning efforts, public engagement results, ARPA regulations, best practices and council city priorities. And then from those, we got the eight funding goals, which were presented kind of as the conclusion of the last time we met of, you know, the synthesis of all that. And that's kind of the backbone of the concept plan. So I won't go over those right now because the RPC will go over them in just a minute. And then once we, once the concept plan is approved, we'll move on to the next phase of the implementation. So what you kind of see in front of you in the memo is just a quick timeline of, you know, the next steps which would occur after that, as well as the fastest available timeline of which they could occur. So once it's adopted, we'll open the concept plan and then, you know, make it open to public so, and start taking applications. After a period of time, the application period will close. Those applications will be reviewed and scored. And then there'll be some presentations by qualified applicants. And then eventually we'll get to awarding the fund. So the, the dates that you see in the table are just the, the dates that are the fastest dates that, you know, we reasonably could do it. Not that we have to do it this way, but this is just the fastest. So you'll see it'll, it takes a couple of days after approval to kind of get the, the marketing, the, the press release out there, get that initial push. And then it has to be open for a period of time, which I think we would think 30 days is the absolute minimum that we could do that. And then after we get the applications, we would certainly need some time to review them, which would be 14, although that's always contingent on the number of applications we would get. And from there, you know, a little bit of lead time until you get, you know, scheduling presentations, making sure that, you know, you can see everything, who applied. So that's kind of the real gist of, you know, where we are. And, you know, without anything else, I'll throw it to the RPC to kind of go over the concept plan and the application and all of that.
Thanks. We actually need your flash.
Can't hear you.
The flash, the flash, okay.
Make sure you turn it on because it's kind of tricky.
Uh, just a shortcut was saved or whatever.
So it should be the, the call. Just leave it on as traffic.
Okay. So you can, okay.
I'll, I'll talk to you first.
You didn't do a note, I have that.
Thank you for, thank you for bearing with us while we got the file back. So, yeah, it's great to be in front of y'all again. I'm JD McLaughlin, a planner at RPC. This is Ashley McLaughlin, the planning manager at RPC. And today, like Will said, we'll be talking about the ARPA Concept Plan, the application process and kind of how to, how we're planning on starting to, to move that process forward. So just looking at kind of the overall project timeline that we've been operating on for, for the scope of this project. We are currently in the, the middle section of developing the concept plan. So we've taken all the background research, all of the public input and processed that. We've put it together into the concept plan. And then the plan is after we get council approval for that, we can move forward with implementation, which is opening up the application, receiving applications, assessing them and, and then allocating funds and then doing the, the ongoing reporting and monitoring for that. So the structure for the presentation that we're going to do, first Ashley's going to walk you through the web plan for the, the concept plan itself and talk through the, the structure of that. And then I will discuss the format for the application that we have put together, as well as the process for moving forward with the application. So with that, we can go ahead and...
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So like JD said, I'm just going to walk through the concept plan itself. So in the interest of time, this is a web-based plan, so to speak. So what we've done is consolidate all of the steps that we've done thus far and consolidated all of the content on the website into a concept plan, or what we're calling the concept plan as part of this project. So as you can see, the tabs at the top, this process tab is just basic information about the timeline and this actual planning process. The concept plan is the meat of the website. And then we have a separate tab for the application itself when that's available, so that people can find that easily. But it's also linked to in the concept plan location as well. So the concept plan, these are the main sections. We have an introduction with some background. And then it goes kind of in reverse chronological order. So again, this is all the content that we've already presented to you so far. And it was mostly already on the website in a slightly different format. So at the top, we have the funding goals like Will referenced that we talked about at the last meeting where we presented. So we start with that because that's kind of the basis of moving forward. And then we've documented all of the public engagement, the federal ARPA regulations. And then these two last bullets are from our very first presentation that talk about existing city priorities as well as data and demographics for the city itself. So just to give you a sense of what is in here, we have some basic background information in this first introduction thing. We also talk about the Urbana ARPA Best Practices, which is also referenced in several different locations. And this, we'll talk about a little bit later, also helps inform the application process and the evaluation process for the applications. So that, all of that information is couched within this concept plan. And then we talk about the application process itself. Like I mentioned, it's also linked separately, but just to provide a little additional content for, or context for people that are looking through the full concept plan for the background and information about the application. So I won't go through all of the contents of this because like I said, by and large, it's things, it's content that you've already looked at, that we've already presented to you. But the new parts of it are really the application itself and that process. So this is the concept plan. With that overview, we can talk about it in more detail later if you'd like and answer any questions. But I'm going to hand it over to JD to talk about the new part, the new content that we haven't talked about with you before, which is the application itself.
There we go. Yeah, so the, the next section that I'm going to talk through is the format of the application itself. So the online application that we have put together has the sections, the following sections listed here. First, just looking for general applicant information, name of the organization, contact info, tax ID number, et cetera. Following that is a, is a bit more kind of basic information about the project itself. So the goal of the project that they are asking for ARPA funds for, projected start and completion dates, the funding amount that they're looking to receive. That's followed by a project information section that provides more in-depth explanations of the project, kind of paragraph format answers, looking for opportunities for the applicant to justify kind of why they are qualified, why their, the proposed project is a good use of city funds and just kind of more, describe more in-depth the nuances of their project. That's followed by the project budget, which describes both kind of large-scale budget categories. So personnel, kind of direct funding, facilities, et cetera, as well as a projected timeline for when they, when they expect to spend the funds if they receive them. And then finally, there's, finally, there is an optional attachments section for any applicants who wish to attach anything in addition to the kind of required questions above. So for the next, the next like dozen or so slides, I'm going to talk through the application questions that we are using to, using for the assessment that we, that RPC and city staff will use to provide a, a score for applicants, basically trying to help you get a... So, all the questions that I'm about to talk about are from this, uh, this kind of project information section. The more in-depth questions are kind of what we're, we're examining and, and looking to assess the applicant, applications on. And, yeah, for this format, you'll see the question that is asked in the application itself, the question that, that we have in kind of the assessment or rubric that we're using to, to judge, judge the response by, and then the individual rating categories that we can choose from in that assessment. Uh, so, the first question is just about federal rules, and this is kind of a yes-or-no, eligible or not eligible question. So, the, the first question is asking applicants to select the federal ARPA expenditure category that they believe this project best aligns with. Uh, and so, for this, this assessment, it's basically just saying, yes, they, this project does align with, with an eligible category, or no, it does not, it's not eligible for ARPA funds, and this project is, is not able to move forward. Uh, the next question is centers around the Urbana ARPA funding goals, that list of eight that we, we have developed, looking for applicants to select the funding goal that they believe their project best lines up with, and then to describe how their project best addresses that, that specific goal. Um, and on this assessment, you can kind of see the, the standard that we'll use for the, the rest of the questions that I'm going to discuss, where one is kind of the lowest score, did not meet this criteria, and four is the highest score, was exceptional in this criteria. So, for example, for this, for this category, A1 is a project where the ARPA funding goals do not appear to be addressed by the application, and a four is a, a project or program that clearly and effectively addresses one or more of the ARPA funding goals that we've developed. The next question is about service gaps, uh, so asking the applicants, what are the, what are the needs that this project provide, that addresses that are not already met by existing local services? Um, and you can see at the bottom, A, A, the scoring goes all the way from A1, which would say, say the project either directly duplicates local ser, the, the project directly duplicates local services, and doesn't really provide any evidence of, of any kind of needed capacity or any additional benefit that the project provides, all the way to A4, which would say that the, the program provides services that are completely unavailable locally, or they articulate the reason that they are in serious undersupply, and the, the project proposal is needed to fill that gap. Uh, the next assessment category is best practices, so asking the applicants to provide data, past experiences, case studies, to justify how they believe that their proposed project will be effective in addressing the ARPA funding goals that they selected. And a one in this category would be an application that does not provide any evidence or support for the effectiveness of the program that they want to pursue. Um, and a four would be an application that shows clearly and convincingly how that program will use kind of best practices and strategies that are known to be effective at accomplishing the goal. Uh, the next question is about priority populations, uh, asking applicants to describe how their project will benefit the low-income disadvantaged or groups particularly impacted by the pandemic, and giving them some flexibility in how they can, how they can justify this. So, whether it's the actual qualification requirements for the project that they're proposing, the specific service area of the project, or the demographics of their current clients, and just saying that they expect the, this project to have similar client base to their current, current clientele. Uh, so, A1 in this category would be an application that doesn't provide any evidence of benefit to impacted groups, while a four would be a program that is targeted specifically to meet the needs of the most marginalized and disproportionately impacted populations. Uh, the next question, uh, for assessment would be previous local assistance, um, asking applicants if they've received financial support from Champaign County governments within the last three years, and really with this question, trying to prioritize product organizations or applicants that have not been able to avail themselves of local government resources recently. So, uh, one in this category would be an applicant that has already received extensive financial assistance from the city of Urbana over the last three years, whereas a, a four would be an applicant that has not already received, received, uh, financial assistance from local governments in that time period. The next assessment area is budget feasibility. So, this, uh, this question asks, uh, for the applicant to describe how they, basically how they arrived at the, the stated costs that they filled out earlier in the application, uh, so whether that was just based on costs of them providing previous programming, previous similar programming in the past, whether it's costs that they got from other organizations who provide that programming, whether it was kind of adding up staff, staff hours, facility costs, et cetera, just justifying how they came up with their overall budget. Uh, a one in this category would be an application that doesn't provide clear justification for how they kind of got, got to their top-line number, while a four would be an, uh, application that provides detailed and substantial evidence that the project is, uh, both feasible and efficient, so that it's not too little money to do the project, and it's not a, a huge over ask for the, the services that they're looking to deliver. Uh, the next category is funding sufficiency, uh, so asking the applicants, uh, one, if the funding amounts that they're asking for from ARPA, from the ARPA program would be sufficient to fully administer the project that they're proposing, and in addition to that, asking, uh, what other funds, if any, are being pursued or have been secured for this project. Uh, so, a one in this category would be the funds that they're asking for would not be sufficient to, to provide the project, and they don't have any, any ways to kind of, any other ways to meet that gap. Um, you will notice on this one, uh, we actually have, all the funds will be sufficient to provide the described project at three, because number four is, uh, saying that the ARPA funds that they'll, they'll, they will, they're using will be leveraged in addition to funds that they already have available, uh, in order to kind of, uh, effectively fund their project. So, really using those ARPA funds to build on an existing infrastructure to, to get them over the top. Um, the next category, and I believe I have like three or four more, so we're getting through these, uh, we'll be done with these soon. Uh, the next project, the next assessment category is project sustainability, uh, so, asking the applicants, uh, how they plan to either continue or to transition the project after ARPA funding has been exhausted. Um, a one in this category would be they don't really have any kind of long-term sustainability plan for what happens after ARPA money runs out, uh, while a four would be, uh, the applicant justifying either while, why a one-time investment from our funds would have kind of benefits that carry on after the money is spent, or providing a clear, uh, kind of transition plan for how they will continue to fund the program, uh, after the ARPA funds are, are fully used. Uh, the next category is the capacity to deliver the described project, um, and there are kind of two questions involved in this one. So, looking, one, uh, if there are any other kind of organizations or partnerships involved with this project, or just, just the applicant, um, and then describing the qual, the applicant's qualifications to manage the awarded funds and carry out the work described, uh, the work they described in their project description. Uh, so, a one in this project will be, uh, that the applicant or other organizations don't provide any, uh, any evidence that they have the experience or capacity to provide the project, uh, while a four would be that they have a clear, successful, undocumented history of providing services like this. Uh, the next question is very similar, so just, and based on the same question, so rather than, uh, the capacity to deliver the project, uh, this is just looking at capacity to manage the funds. So, a one in this category would be that the applicant either has a history of grant mismanagement, or they have no history of grant management and no demonstrated capacity to, like, kind of take on this grant, while a four would be an applicant, uh, has a clear, successful, and documented history of managing similar grants to the, this ARPA funding. Uh, the next question is around data and reporting, looking, uh, looking for the applicants to describe how they would measure the success of the program that they're describing, what metrics they will use, and kind of, based on these metrics, what their anticipated outcome of the program is. And I, I will say, in addition to this question, there is kind of a required, like, check-the-box quote, uh, statement at the end that says that applicants will comply with all kind of federally required reporting. Uh, so, a one in this category would be that the applicant has demonstrated no intention to measure, to measure the impact and, or kind of report on the, the impacts of their project, uh, while a four would be an applicant demonstrating that they have a clear desire and capacity to gather and report data, both for kind of their own personal assessment and for ongoing reporting. And then, finally, the, the last kind of assessment question we have here is not specifically based on a question in the application, but is kind of a, a overarching question that we wanted to add at the end, just asking, as we're assessing them, uh, does this funding application pose any uncertainties regarding outcomes or unintended consequences? And if so, have, have appropriate checks, balances, mitigation efforts been identified? Uh, so, a one in this category would be, uh, the application doesn't really raise any questions about program side effect, or the application raises serious questions about program side effects and doesn't address them, while a four would be, uh, the application raises no concerns about unintended consequences, or demonstrates that if there are consequences, they plan to address them. Um, I don't anticipate applications for this, many of them being anything worse than a three or four, but if, just thinking of examples, like if there was an infrastructure project that could have significant impacts on neighboring properties, and they just didn't discuss it at all in the, in the application, that could be, that could be one example of an, an unintended consequence that, that could be, could be addressed, that, that would, that would be important. So, that is kind of all of the, all of the questions that are going into the assessment of applications. The plan is that kind of, uh, and actually, I'll go ahead and talk about the process, and we can kind of discuss how those will be used in, in a second. So, uh, kind of as Will mentioned in his memo for you, uh, the plan is to open the application process after the concept plan is approved. We know y'all are ready to kind of start providing, providing this funding, so, assuming, assuming you are able to, to approve the concept plan next week, we can, we'll work on getting the, the application open by the end of that week, and then, as Will mentioned, having at least, uh, at least until the, the sixteenth of October, as a kind of thirty-day open application period for that, for that time period. Uh, the application will be provided through Neighborly, which is the city's existing online application service for, for grants management. Um, on the, on the website that Ashley provided, that Ashley kind of provided a tour of, under that application tab, we will provide a video walkthrough of the application process, provided on the website, along with contact info for any further questions. So, trying to get out ahead and provide, uh, prospective applicants basically a step-by-step guide on how to fill out the application, but also being ready to, to get in touch with applicants and provide any additional info that, that they may have. Once, uh, once the concept plan is approved, we're, uh, in the process of drafting press releases about the application process, uh, that will be sent to local media, along with digital flyers and social media content for the city to distribute to its contacts. So, kind of making, making the public aware through social media, through, uh, through local media, and through, uh, just kind of distributing the, this, the information about the, the application period to, to contacts that are available. So, the plan, after that application period window closes, um, all applicants will be scored by at least one RPC employee and at least one city employee. Um, the exact, exact process for how this will happen, we're not kind of being too prescriptive right now, because I think, like Will said, part of it will be dependent on just kind of what the, what the, the quantity of applications are, and kind of how we, how we need to approach getting through the, those applications. Uh, but the, yeah, the plan is that one RPC staff and one city staff will, will, at least, will assess all applications, uh, kind of going through them on, on the, the scale that I have provided, and coming up with scores that can be, that will be advisory for the, the city council to, to look at as, as a way to help, help y'all assess these applications. Um, once the scores are available, uh, those, those assessment scores, as well as information about the projects, will be presented and provided to the city council, and all eligible applicants will also be provided to, will also be invited to present their proposal briefly to the city council. Again, the exact logistics of this might differ, kind of depending on how many eligible projects we have, but the, the plan is to give all eligible applicants a, a chance to, to provide, to present their projects to y'all. And then, after, uh, after applications have been reviewed and presented to y'all, and the applicants have also had a chance to present to y'all, uh, city council will be able to vote on the allocations, uh, including what projects will receive funding, and if, if y'all feel the need to adjust the, the funding amounts from those discussed in the applications, uh, you will be able to do that as well. Um, we are kind of mentioning in the, in the, the public language about this process that if there are unallocated funds after this application process, uh, the city may open another application process in the future, however, that's not guaranteed. Uh, council might decide to allocate all of the, the funding that we have set aside as a result of this process. Uh, so, mentioning that that is a possibility, but not, definitely not a guarantee that there will be funding available after this project is, process is over. Um, so, I believe, yeah, that is, that is my summary of kind of the application process. Uh, so, I think with that, Ashley and I are happy to take any questions about the concept plan, about the application process, or anything else that, that council members are curious about.
Any questions? Mary Alice.
Hi. Thank you so much for that. I, I have kind of one overarching question, which is, uh, you know, based on your rubric and, and the different items that you have set forth, there seems to me that there might be a couple of things that would just automatically disqualify somebody, meaning, um, that you wouldn't go through all the other scores. So, so my example is if, if I look at a job application and I require a master's degree, but they have a bachelor's degree, I'm not going to look at the rest of it, right? So, are there specific things here that you've listed that you feel are things that completely disqualify somebody? Um, so, so that, that's one piece. The second one, and it's a very perspicacity one, but it seems to me like all of your ones should really be zeros, instead of, so, I, I would be curious to know why you go from one to four instead of from zero to three, because they don't meet it, right? So, it's zero, it's null. Um, and then my third question, it kind of along some of these lines is, is there any requirement in terms of organizations, companies, whomever applies to be in good standing? Uh, I know that when we do, um, the social service grants, we do require that they are in good standing with the state, so, um, those are my three questions.
Yeah. Um, so, I think the, regarding your first question about kind of disqualifying questions, currently, the, the very first one that I mentioned, which is just, is this kind of a qualified use under the federal regulations, uh, that, that is the only kind of weed-out, yes, they qualify, no, they don't, question at this point. I know, uh, I know we, we had been in discussions about possibly, I think, the next question, if, if that was, if that should also be a weed-out question. So, if they don't meet one of those eight funding goals, just go ahead and, and push that to, to the side. Um, that's not the structure right now, but I think that if, if that was something that, that council wanted, we could kind of restructure that question. Uh, but, yeah, currently, currently...
So, there's only one filter question, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I kind of feel like a second filter, which could, you could carve off of one of yours, is if they're not in good standing, then I don't think that we should be providing them funding.
Yeah.
Um, but, but that said, you could have, you could have a pile that's separate, right? These are all the ones that meet your goals, and if you, and these people have something, but they don't specifically address your goals, if you have money left over, you can look at those as a second bucket.
Yeah, and I will say on the, the last question you had about good standing, I believe that we, the, the last page is just kind of a list of certifications of, I, I assert, I, I promise, I certify that this is true, that this is true, that this is true. I believe in good standing with the state is one of those, but we can double-check that.
Um, I will say too that...
that we, the last page is just kind of a list of certifications of, I assert, I, I promise, I certify that this is true, that this is true, this is true. I believe in good standing with the state is one of those, but we can double-check that.
I will say too, that, to your last point about having maybe two separate piles or whatever, there is a range for all of these questions, right? So if some of them are consistently scoring low, there could be some amount of follow-up that we do to make sure we have all the information. Maybe it sounds like a promising project, but maybe we don't have enough information to really make that call. So there is a certain amount of follow-up we could do, but also, I agree that those with the lowest scores, or maybe lower scores, might still be feasible if there's money left over, or if they seem, you know, again, like promising projects, or coming from an agency or an individual that seems to be, you know, responsible and ready to go, we could theoretically follow up with those lower-scored projects.
And I will just say that your second question is noted, and that can be an easy change, just to make it zero to three instead of one to four.
Okay, Chandra.
Hi, so thank you for all your work thus far, I mean, great presentation so far. So RPC will provide outreach and technical assistance to prospective applicants. If, so hypothetically, if we're on this 30-day period, when would that technical assistance, you know, happen? How would it happen? What format? How many sessions? Like, I'm just curious as to what all of that looks like, because you said, like, maybe we don't have all the information, so, you know, how would, how would follow-up look like if someone has a, a good application, but there were some things missing, maybe they need a little bit more direct guidance? How would RPC be providing that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So like JD mentioned, we'll have kind of an initial kind of walkthrough of the application ready on the website, but then the contact information as well will be available. And we essentially anticipated, and we haven't nailed this down, just establishing open office hour type things, where we can be available for questions at any point. We could theoretically set up meetings if something more kind of official needs to be set aside with more than one person at the agency, or whoever the applicant happens to be. So meeting in person, or over the phone, or emails, or whatever, are essentially what we're counting on at the moment.
Yeah, and yeah, I think, like I mentioned, we're planning on putting together just kind of a basic walkthrough, got video guide for the application, so just kind of trying to get ahead and answer any questions that might come up and kind of guide people through the application itself. But yes, also, we'll provide that contact information and communicate that we're happy to answer questions, or schedule time to, to answer questions. I think, I think regarding the, regarding your, the second part of your question about kind of applicants that might not have been strong for a particular reason, that might, if it got tweaked, that could be improved, I think, similar to what we were saying about kind of the, the assessment process kind of being up in the air, I think some of that might depend on just kind of what the, what the applicants, what the number of applications that we get and are working to assess. I don't know that we have an exact process for how we're going to kind of sort those and kind of double back, but I think once we, once we have an idea of kind of what the quantity of applications are, and how to, how to tackle that, that number of applications, we can, we can kind of develop a clearer plan for, if there are, if there are projects that seem promising but need, need more follow-up at that point.
Okay. And then the, the review, it said at least one RPC person and at least one city employee. Do you, is that all? Like, is it only going to be a two-person review? Will it be like a blind review, where you remove the organization's name, and you're just looking at the proposal? Like, what sort of review process, besides the, the ranking?
I mean, I think, I think when I was talking about the, the assessment process, I mentioned at minimum, it will be one RPC staff and one city staff. I think we, we came into this open, if there are kind of more, more people that council feel like should be involved in the assessment process, we're, we're open to that, but this is just kind of a baseline for, for what, what we kind of thought would be a minimum, minimum acceptable assessment procedure. And again, like, if there's, God forbid, if there's like 100 applications, and I don't know that we want to say that, like, there'll be a whole handful of staff available to look through every single one of those, but I think if there, if it is councils, if council does want there to be kind of more people involved, we are definitely open to that. What was, what was the second part of it?
The blind review.
Oh, the blind review. I don't know that we had specifically discussed, discussed the review process, but I, I would think it would be relatively simple to either, when exporting the, the online applications, not including the header, or just having a separate staff member print that out and remove it, and then hand it off to the people who are assessing it, but I think that, that is a good point, that the process very much could be anonymized if we, if we want to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Chris.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, and, you know, this is, you know, as a taxpayer, this is like amazing, you know, accountability for the money. So, and I don't know if you know the answer to my questions, so I want to invite Carol Mitten to jump in if you know, but will the Urbana Park District be put through this process? Will the school district be put through this process? And I heard last week, or a couple weeks ago, that the Public Works Director thought maybe the fire department would want to, you know, go after this money. Would you put them through the process? So the answer is yes. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so applicants for this can be, government agencies, can be nonprofits, can be departments within the Urbana government, but yes, everyone, everyone-
Everyone has to go through this process, okay. I guess, you know, this money has been available since June 7th, 2021, and I will tell you that members of the public have approached me, and have been very frustrated to watch the Champaign County government distribute their ARPA money. The City of Champaign has been able to distribute their money, but Urbana seems to be kind of slow off the mark. Now, obviously, we are taking a very methodical and painstaking, detailed process here, and maybe that's good. But I will tell you, today, a car driver stopped his car and yelled at me, "When are we going to get the ARPA money?" Out, out of his car window. So all that to say, people are frustrated, and we need to kind of get a giddy up. At the same time, a 30-day window is very small, and I don't know how many people are really aware of this complicated application. There's only two organizations, oh, three, in a, in a sense, a neighborhood, Dr. Ellis subdivision, but there's only three organizations that are here tonight. So I'm concerned that the 30-day window ain't enough. I mean, is that kind of what you, yeah, I'm, and to Angel Johnson's question, I mean, how readily available is this help to fill out these applications going to be? I mean, they're going to, there's some, I know, I wouldn't know how to really get through all this. So anyway, those are my concerns. I don't know what you want to address, but-
Could I just say something in, in regards to the frustration that you expressed?
Yeah.
And because it's not fair to direct that at RPC?
Oh, I wasn't doing it like that.
I just want to be, I just want to get clear to the public that if there is any frustration, it is, it, it should be directed to, you know, city staff. However, this money was a windfall to communities, and it was, it was, there was a lot of, there was a lot of money being pushed out, and this was the only money that was really being spent, that cities could access. But like everything with, with the COVID-related money, it was, you had to have people available to spend the money in an organized way. And it, we were incredibly fortunate that RPC had the bandwidth that we, so we could hire them, and we've been very clear about the process. I mean, JD put his slide up and, and showed you what we had mapped out from the very beginning. So we haven't had the same level of internal staff resources to push things out, like some of the other jurisdictions, Champaign in particular, but we've been, I think, very diligent about moving through the process that we set ourselves to. So I just want to, and, and that was something that, that we got, we got the support of council to do. So I just want, I just, it's really important that opportunity, to take opportunities like this, to have people understand, we're doing the best we can with the resources we have, and we are really super lucky that RPC was available. I mean, we wouldn't have been able to do this without them.
I wasn't criticizing RPC.
Okay.
And, and Carol, I accept everything you just said, and I think you understand people's frustration, and, and why they would be, you know, when and how are we going to get the money? I mean, they've been waiting, you know, and-
We get frustrated too, but we, but, but, you know, we're, we're, what, what I, if there's one thing that I would like for the public to understand, is, is the city that they live in, and the, and the, and the limitations that we have, you know? It's important to understand that we do have limitations. Now, to your other point, about 30 days, it is really fast, and so that's one of the, that's part of the feedback we want. If you, if that feels too fast, you know, what Will had said is that's the fastest it could kind of go, but we totally get that, and so if you think that should be longer, then let's talk about that. I mean, I think we would all, you know, think that the, that it gives more time for support to people who might need help. I mean, as staff, we get more time to, to do our application, so just give us some feedback.
Yeah, well, I, I guess what I would say is, we could try the 30-day window, but if we don't get very many applications, and we're not anywhere near spending the 10 million, or there is numerous complaints about getting their applications done in time, you know, we can maybe extend it afterwards, so.
I will, just to respond to your previous comments too, in terms of the complexity-
Is your mic on? I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. In terms of the complexity of the application, we walked through it in great detail, because we were looking mostly, we wanted to kind of communicate how the questions tie with the assessments, which tie with our overarching goals and stuff. The questions themselves, you know, are really just narrative questions for people to respond to. How are you meeting these goals? What kind of budget do you need and why? You know, pretty basic, straightforward questions, so we hope it's not too cumbersome. We tried to make it as clear as possible. I will say, this whole process itself does take extra time. This is not a process that, you know, the City of Champaign went through, because they spent most of the money internally. So all of this work that goes into it does take extra time. People filling out the applications takes extra time, evaluating them, all of that. The reporting is also going to take a lot of extra time. So this process of, you know, opening it up to the community to spend this money in ways that they see fit, is more time-consuming, and, you know, there are only so many hours in the day. So I think we are moving forward with this process, but there are some inherent things built in that do just take longer.
These are essay questions too, right?
Most of them.
Yeah.
I mean, the ones that we went through are open-ended questions, yes.
Can I, can I add one clear, just clarification, since, since I think the time period is a discussion? You were talking about waiting to see what happens after 30 days, and we talked about, you know, having a rolling admission, and it gets more complicated if you, you know, have a period and extend it, or wait to see what you get, and then you're kind of doing a quasi-evaluation at that period, at that point. So the idea was, it's simpler to have, you know, a set period of time, and that be it, as opposed to trying to have a rolling, or seeing what you get, and then kind of playing it by ear. I mean, it's, it's a possibility, but it just gets a little bit more difficult to you, and then you do have to make a value judgment of, well, is this enough? Should we keep it open? So that's just a thought on that as the discussion, for the discussion.
Grace.
Thank you. Got a lot of things here. First, I just want to say, RPC, thank you for the work that you guys have done. I really liked the website, some of the transparency on the demographic info, and the use of ARPA funds so far. I think were really helpful things. I've got a few, I'm going to start like simplest, and then work to more big picture. First one is, can we have a list of the draft questions before next week? I know you gave them here, but like, all together?
I think they are on the website, but we can forward a specific link, yes.
Okay. What I found looked like not the questions, draft application content. I didn't see draft questions themselves on the website.
Yeah, I believe, yeah, at the bottom, at the bottom of that intro page, let's see.
I don't see it, but if you could-
Yeah, so, yeah, so we do, we do have the, the questions, and then the rubric that I just discussed, but we can also-
The content is not in a question format, like, click it. It's not questions.
The, that first section is all, all of the kind of just basic details that we asked about, and then, yeah, starting on about the, the third page is where we get to the actual, the actual kind of short-answer question structure.
Thank you, I didn't scroll down far enough, thank you.
No problem.
Next was, can we see all of the applications, like a summary and the applications themselves? Even the ones that were ineligible, regardless of the scoring, if we can have those? Thank you. And then other question was about assistance with applications. I appreciate the video and being available for questions, but I think the other points that have been raised is, if there's anything that is available or can be available beyond that, particularly for smaller businesses or organizations, and newer applicants who might not have as much experience in this, it's really hard to know what questions to ask when you don't even know what you're missing in the first place. So I was wondering if there's a plan or possibilities for more involved assistance with the application process?
I, I mean, I think there are not kind of, past the kind of office hours and stuff that we discussed previously, there's not kind of more in-depth plans at this point. I think, I think if there's an articulated need, we can definitely schedule, like, whether it's like a Zoom or an in-person kind of walkthrough session, or something similar. I think, I think part of, part of the structure that we're, that we have right now is kind of looking primarily for applicants from organizations that will provide the, the service, the services laid out in the kind of eight funding goals. So I think with that, there, with that, we're, we're assuming that if, if an applicant can provide these services, that, that they will be able to provide some of the information that we're looking for, but, but also, we are kind of happy to kind of help them along the way if they do run into any issues, so I think-
And there won't be a, there won't be a conflict of interest there, where you're the organization reviewing it? Like, will you two personally be reviewing it and be helping people? Because that's some of the things we run into sometimes here, is the people accepting, then reviewing the applications are the same ones who would be answering questions. So there's a kind of a limit of, I can't sit down and tell you, oh, you should add this. Is that going to be a situation for you guys?
We hadn't thought about that specifically, given that, while the scoring is part of kind of the ground-level information that the council will be receiving, we aren't making the decision, so we hadn't actually considered that as a conflict of interest, despite the fact that we would be doing the scoring. So that is something that we can talk about further, if that's something that you want to have like a larger separation for.
I think that would be good to consider. I think it will come up. We've heard in public input tonight about more in-depth help with the assistance, with the application process, so I think that would be a good thing to be able to offer in a way that doesn't run into that conflict.
Yeah, I will say, it could get tricky in terms of staffing levels, but it is something we can definitely talk about. Yeah. And to the previous point, we had talked about setting up, you know, a meeting or a workshop at a designated time to walk people through the application, and we did end up landing on the video, just because it would be on-demand and available, as with the office hours, or the, you know, any sort of other communication, kind of letting people tell us when and how they need assistance, rather than asking people to show up at a specific time, but we can certainly schedule something if that becomes apparent and useful to people.
Great, thank you. And then my last one here is, I definitely agree with the longer application window. I think 30 days is not long enough at all, especially since we've taken a year and a half just setting up the goals and the application itself. I think 30 days is not a reasonable expectation from the public on such a big thing like this. I think it would be better to set it from the get-go, and not wait and see after 30 days, or do a second round. I think it would make more sense to just set it at, I think even 90 days, at least 60 days. I understand that it's a narrative, so there's not as much stuff, but I think it's a lot to ask for people to gather their paperwork. Some of them were asking if they're going to partner with someone else for reporting, for another organization. I think there's a lot of things go into it, and then especially awareness. If someone doesn't hear about this for two weeks, and then it's due in two weeks, I think that's just absolutely not okay. So I think 30 days, I'm not okay with, and I would definitely support changing it from the get-go. I think 90 days, at least 60.
I need to interrupt for a moment. Mary Alice, could you take the chair?
Yep, I'll take the chair. The chair recognizes Charisse.
Okay, I'm just going to ask one question, basically, and that is, the ARPA website, because it just says, "The concept plan is available for viewing on the ARPA website." I would like to understand that real quick.
Just the, the website that Ashley provided, let's see- Just the the website that Ashley provided, let's see, that Ashley provided a tour of earlier. Yeah, so, yeah, on on all of on all of the kind of on all of the promotional materials, we have cc-rpc.org/urbanaarpa is the the URL that leads to this website. But yeah, this this website that Ashley provided a guide of that has a summary of the process, the concept plan in full, and then the the links to all the the application materials as well.
And this is linked to from the city's website as well.
Yes.
Okay, and then Mary Alice, you keep the chair for me.
I was going to say it's actually broken on the city website, but I'm sure we'll have that fixed.
Okay. Good to know.
Do you want me to continue ahead of the chair? All right, are there any other questions? James?
Yeah, I I do want to, I'm going to reiterate a couple of things. Thank you both for your presentation tonight. Thank you for all your work in this. I got to say, I'm pretty excited to see a timeline and and see this moving forward. I'm going to add to the list of people that should be responsible for how long it's taken, and that's council. Because one of the things that both the city of Champaign and Champaign County Board had that this council did not have was a track record working together. And it took it took some time, I would say, for this council to get together and talk about how we wanted to move forward, what our priorities were. And I think that was important to do, to to come up with the priorities we have for funding. I think that was very informative, and I feel like we're maybe in a stronger place because of that. But that that's on us. That that took our time to do that and to get to the place that we're at. I will say, though, that it has been talked about and talked about, and the steps have gone through, and the council goals have been shared, and then the funding goals have been shared. And the overall timeline, we're about on track for what we've been saying for almost a year. And so while I am supportive of a a longer window, I think 30 days is too short. I don't think that if 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 there hasn't been encouragement going out from this council to the this community about being ready to apply for this and knowing what the funding goals were and knowing what our council goals are, and and they haven't heard from us on that, then then we have also kind of let the process down. I'll I'll speak to the longer window because I do I do think, I'm not sure I want to extend it to to 90 days, but I do think, I mean, at least 45, maybe 60 days is appropriate. And let's pick a timeline. Let's not extend, you know, three days before the deadline because we didn't get what we wanted to. Let's let's pick a timeline, expand it to where we think it should be, and and stick to it. I want to reiterate, there needs to be help for people who want to apply for this and not get their application thrown out out of hand. They need help understanding what qualifies, maybe how what they want to do would fit into the goals. I think they need that kind of help. I do, I am concerned about the graders being the helpers, and not because of intent, but just because of intrinsically that that can be a conflict of interest. That can be a concern. I do, I do think that the, I appreciate the suggestion of a a blind review to the degree that it can be done. I don't, I mean, not, it can be really hard to really pull all of this stuff out because people will put things into their narratives and and such. But to the degree that it can be done, I'd be curious. If council wants to see all the applications, shouldn't council get it blind in the same fashion and look at it at the merits of the proposal as well and not specifically on which group did it? It's just something we should think about, right? So that are, you know, taking those things out, having a blind review is to reduce any unconscious or conscious bias by looking at where it's coming from and thinking about that. I do hope we can have three or four reviewers for each proposal. I think the have it, I know it's hard. If we have 100, that's crazy, I understand that. But but having more reviewers tends to help without liars to to take out to mitigate any outlier reviews. I do, I do not, we talked a little bit about, you know, first question is an in-or-out kind of question. You mentioned the second question is the second question potentially an in-or-out question. I'd say no. I'd say we shouldn't take one out just because they got a zero on how it fit with council goals because we might get to that point where we've distributed all the funds and need to look at things that didn't quite fit and and what we can do about that. There was also the last question, which was the unintended consequences question. That question, while I while I understand where it's coming from, that question was the one that I thought this has subjective viewpoint written all over it, right? You can, you know, what's what's not in here? What didn't they think of? Well, you can work really harder than that, or you can be at the 50th one you've looked at and not work really hard with that. That I I'm a little bit concerned about that question being a scored question. I think it's an important thing to ask. But I think, but I don't know that I I'm comfortable with it being a scored question without some kind of explanation from the reviewer as to where they were coming from, if that if that makes sense. And so I think, I did mention that people will need help with this. And I'm going to say that one more time because I think people will need help with this. I it's it's long. None of the questions in themselves may be complicated, but the collection of them, I think, is going to be intimidating. If you're asking for several million dollars, you do have to, you have to put some work in to justify it and explain how you're going to use it. But I I do think we should have a methodology for people to get assistance and to make sure that they're just not barking up the wrong tree with what they do. I mean, if they've got a great idea but just don't have a great, aren't great grant writers, for lack of a better description, we need to help them get their application to fit in so that it gets due consideration on its merits rather than on how how well they can follow the form, if that makes sense.
Sure. And hopefully, the presentations will help with that as well, provide a more full picture of who it will be that's, you know, applying for this money or carrying office work.
Thank you.
I can clarify a little bit too. The scores, the way we have it drafted, are not meant to be deterministic just because it's really, you know, comparing priorities and money values, you know. So for if a question is a little bit more subjective, you know, it certainly won't be, you know, it won't undercut somebody's possibility to get awards. Then as far as, you know, the blindness in terms of council, I mean, people will be presenting. So on that end, I don't know if it's feasible. I think I would trust RPC to figure out as much possible for the scoring, but.
No, I was referring to, I I heard someone ask if they could receive all the applications.
Yeah, yeah, that one.
And that I assume that was just to look at the breadth, right?
Yeah, the so the we will communicate the list of all applications received with their scores, inclusive of the ones who were identified as ineligible.
All right, Sharice, would you like me to continue, or would you like the chair back?
I'd like the chair back, thank you.
All right.
Are there any other questions for our delegation? Chandra?
So yes, I agree with 30 days being too short, 90 is maybe too long. 45 to 60 seems to be the happy medium in there. Gives people time to hear about it, inquire, look at the application started themselves, you know, and then ask for help if needed, and then still have time to go back, make changes, and submit. So I think like 45 to 60 would be good and and just from the outset, like no changing it on the back end or extending it on the back end. Yeah, I other than that, I I think it's good. I'm looking forward to getting this money out the door. And I I think we have been thoughtful. It's taken a long time, but I think this process is thoughtful. We are, we have sort of made it so that these are the areas that we want to fund. I think, I know it's been frustrating for the community, but I think it's, it'll be better in the end, so. That's all, thank you.
Anyone else? Grace?
Thank you. Last little things here. On the application tab or somewhere, could we have the rubric a little more prominent? Some people are having kind of lost in the introduction and like maybe on that application tab, like to see the list of questions before they enter the portal and have the rubric all right there, I think would be great. And about the timing, I agree. I think 90 days was fine, but I'll throw that as the higher bargain one. But 60, I'd go with 60, maybe, talking down. I don't know, process-wise, is that something we need to like vote or straw poll vote on here as council? Because this resolution here tonight is to pass the concept plan, which seems to include the timeline and things too. So I'm not sure procedurally what we need to do to change that before passing this concept plan next week officially.
Could we get that updated to 60 days for next week?
See, I think the exact details of all the application process things, the reviewers, is not explicitly in the concept plan, so that's more of a straw poll or whatever. I maybe JD, you put it in there from the last time I saw it, but.
I was going to say, there's a general.
It does say on the website about one-month application window on this concept plan website, which is what my understanding that we're being presented with as the concept plan.
So we can make it then 60 and just put in the concept plan then?
Yeah, yeah, I think I believe, yeah. Currently, the document says expects to leave the application open for one month. We were just trying to provide like a general overarching idea of what the process will be. So yeah, so I don't know, Will, on your end, if you want to, if you if it needs to be officially changed or if that can be.
I it sounds like just for clarity, 60 days, put it in there and call it fit.
That's it. Easy edit for the website, but I don't know, other than that, what we need to do.
Just the website then.
Okay.
Mary Alice?
So I'm I'm curious. I was before the meeting, I was trying to figure out where was this concept plan? I mean, it's on the website, and I was looking at it, I was like, is it just these dots? So I just want to be very crystal clear here, since that's what this resolution is talking about. Your concept plan is really background information that we gathered, you know, what the answers were, what the priorities were. Does it include the actual application and the questions that we're going to ask? I'm just trying to get all the components here.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So right now, we have just draft application and rubric up, but it will include the final application and rubric. And like counsel person Will can mention, we'll have that also available in the application tab above the actual application, which will be its own kind of portal, separate portal that's hosted by the city's application consultant, the neighborly app.
So once once the proposed final or or final draft, whatever you want to call it, the what you want us to vote on it, if that can be emailed to us so we don't have to dig in a website to try and find it again, that would be awesome. Then the second piece that I just wanted to bring up, just to confirm what everybody else is talking about with technical assistance, TAing, I mean, you have a you have a good plan to kind of get people started. It would almost seem to me that you would like want two chunks of people, like people who are in mid-process of working on their application and people who are trying to finish it up. I think it would be good some to add something to the concept plan, like we have plans, you know, we will provide technical assistance to people doing X, Y, and Z, kind of lay that out so that people are aware and and can schedule time.
Or maybe the ability to save the application if you stop, have to stop mid.
Well, that's going to be a whole thing too. And even potentially having office hours at the Urbana Free Library, just as an idea. Because it's more central. So those are, and and 45, 60 days seems about right. I'll go with that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Where's my end?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
If you're waiting for. I'm going to move something with no recommendations because we have a couple of things, but I would like to move it forward to city council. So I will move resolution number 202209068R, resolution adopting the City of Urbana American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Concept Plan, to city council with no recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, Mary Alice, move with no recommendation to city council. Chandra seconded. Any discussion? James?
Yeah, I I feel compelled to say that I I am supporting this going to council because I think it's very close to being ready to go. It's a it's a technical thing for council to move something from committee to the city council meeting without a recommendation. It doesn't imply that there's not support for it. I would say that I I feel consensus that there's support for it, but we'll find out when we actually vote on it. But I I am supporting it and intend to support it.
Grace?
Thanks. Just quickly, I wanted to say thank you to RPC, Ashley and JD for having these presentations and regular updates, and for the public for being patient and showing up or listening remotely tonight to this. And I look forward to this process actually getting started on the public end and actually starting to look at applications and get these things moving. So thank you to everyone for being a part of this process.
And before we take a vote, I'd like to make a comment myself.
All right, would you like me to take the chair?
Yes, would you please?
All right, the chair recognizes Sharice.
Okay, my comment is basically this. Chris, I get what you're saying about, you know, people being frustrated and everything, but this is what they asked for, exactly what they asked for. So be careful what you ask for. You want the deliberation, you want everything to be all transparent, you want everybody to have every answer, every question answered before it can even be asked. So that takes a lot of time. No one's trying to keep money from you. No one's trying to make you beg or borrow, steal or any of that. What we're trying to do is be very deliberate and very careful and be mindful of what the public asked for. So, thank you.
All right, I will give the chair back to Sharice.
All right, now, would anyone else care to make a anything before we have discussion? I mean, before we vote? Okay, everyone in favor of voting for resolution number 202209068R for to for move forward to council with no recommendation?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Okay, thank you. So this will move forward. Council input and com and communication. Thank you, RPC. Grace?
Thank you. I've got quick things I just wanted to bring up just to keep the thoughts of them alive, nothing for tonight. I'm still interested in visiting the budget or the resolution for the police budget. I think that's something I would still be interested in keeping alive after we've had meetings on that. Also, discussion on hybrid meetings. I'm still interested in having on the logistics and technical sides of that and legal aspects, and then contracts with By Black Shambana for things like application assistance or other contractual services. So I just wanted to bring those up to keep the ideas alive. Thank you.
Mary Alice?
I'm just going to make something real quick because it was brought up today about the Lehman Garden, and that is something that the city rented out for $1. So we haven't pulled any funding from it, really. It was an organization or a group of people who kind of managed, and there's been a lot of change going on there. I don't know like all the details. I know that the mayor knows a lot of the details, but just to to say that the city didn't pull any funding. And the people who've been managing the garden have been going through a transitionary phase between the committee members, which is why it's kind of not been kept up in the past year, so.
Anyone else for council input? Okay, with no further business, this meeting is adjourned.